I just, you know, I, I agree with Dave that there's a problem. Sometimes you don't have the money to pay it that quick. What if we took that off and not had the double 100% increase in 15 days? What if it just stayed the way it was? Or is that, does that, does that become some kind of great incentive to make them pay? I'm not sure if it even, if it, if it works or not.
Yep.
But maybe, you know, maybe that's the answer, but.
That's a great question, Councilman Hanson. Basically, this is a hundred dollar fine, but we've built in an incentive to get it paid quickly. And if people will pay quickly, we'll cut the fine in half for them. So, but it is, it's basically a hundred dollar fine.
Yeah. And I see the incentive, I just, there's the people that Dave was talking about that might not have the money to do it no matter what, without getting to their next social security check, you know? And maybe that's not even the people that are getting the ticket, I'm not sure.
So, in my thought, I, I completely understand that, and I understand people get paid, but don't park on the street during the snow, and then you don't get a ticket. And I think if you park on, if you don't follow the rule, then I, I guess you get the fine.
And that's why when, when you guys said what you said, I said, oh, okay, I'm good, because that was what I was thinking as well, that, well, they shouldn't be on the street. And then I was, I was totally pleased with what Chief Dave said. If they move the car, they more than likely won't get a ticket. Is, am I correct? So, they get that warning, and, and most of the people that are on, say, social security, whatever, most of them probably don't park in the street, and most of them have their car in their driveway. You know what I mean? And, and I honestly feel that one of the bigger reasons why we have so many people parking in the street is because we do have some streets that are, are narrow, and most of those areas, except for where you guys live, most of those, when, when those homes were built and people was moved in, it was mainly maybe one or two cars. And now their kids are grown, and their kids are still living at home, and, and one or two cars have gone to five or six cars. And that's not.
That's true.
That's normal to see throughout the city, four, five, six cars in someone's driveway, or out on the street, or on their lawn.
But you know.
Some do park on their lawn.
It's true, but you know, I mean, I've had kids who live in apartment buildings without enough parking, and they've had to park three or four blocks away. So they're off the street and walk, and that's unfortunate and not super fun in a snowstorm. But our plows can't plow if people are parked on the street, and that's the reason for the ordinance. It's not because we're trying to collect money. It's not because we're trying to be mean. It's because we want our, our plows to be safe and get the things plowed, right? And if that's, for me, that's the underlying reason for the ordinance, and so I'm, I'm good with it. And I, and I like the addition of more ways, because I think that is a problem.
I agree. Any other discussion on this item?
I just have a quick thought. I, I serve as a judge pro test for Salt Lake City and handle the traffic violations. And this is pretty standard, the timeframe and the fines per payment. So I think it's pretty consistent, and, and I don't, I mean, there are some inconveniences, but I think the solution is just not parking on the street in a snowstorm.
All right, thank you. This will be on our business meeting tonight, and if we can discuss it more, then if we need to.
Okay, thank you.
All right, thanks, Roger. We'll move on to discussion C is a discussion on Resolution 2023-21, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving an agreement with Nelson Brothers Construction Company for the water reclamation facility headworks project presented by Jamie Grandpree, the Public Works Director.
This is a lot of money.
We've been dreading this one.
But to echo Roger's comment, this is just boring public work stuff. So I did a slideshow with this one just because of the amount of money it is, so I can give you at least some ideas of what's going on down there. I don't know if you got all familiar with our water reclamation facility. But I do have just a quick slideshow to go through. So our current headworks facility sits on the south end, the kind of southwest end of the facility is pictured right here. Just three pictures of the outside, kind of the east side, the west side, and then the front, I guess would be kind of the north side. If you look on the west side, which is that upper right picture, you can kind of see the rust, kind of just deteriorating the rest of that, all that bluvers and the fans and stuff like that that are supposed to be used to help ventilate that building, to give it the extra life that we was hoping to get out of it. A picture of the inside, we have the, the, the left picture there is of our electrical room, which is about the size of a small walk-in closet in a home. And then the upper picture, which is kind of just showing the grit, some, some gates that kind of moves the water around within the, the building, and then the grit is just kind of on the other side of those gate valves or the slide gates. And then there's a picture of that fan that we've been dealing with for the last, at least in my tenure with Twilla City, I've dealt with that since I've started. That fan's pretty shot. So that's kind of a picture of the inside of facility. And then going on to our, this is an overview of the whole facility, so it shows all of our buildings, the admin, the shops, our greenhouse, our UV, the oxidation ditch, the clarifiers, and then you can see our headworks building kind of down there at the bottom, kind of the existing building, and then our proposed location for our new building, going right next door to the old building, which is the perfect spot for it. Still on property, still within the facility, close to where the wastewater from town is coming in, because that main line that's feeding the plant comes in right there at the west side into the, the old headworks. So we just intercept that and bring it into the new headworks. And so then I got another picture, my next slide. This is a picture of our current shop building, and I put that in there as a reference to show you what our new headworks facility is going to look like. So that's an existing building, building that's down there right now. And then going on to the next picture, that's a rendering of our new headworks. As you can tell, it's pretty close to what our shops building looks like. Some, some features on this building is the skylights and the equipment access hatches that are up on the roof, bringing a natural light in any of our buildings down there is a plus just because it helps kind of light the building up, gives the building a little bit more feel to the outside and, and not have to use as much lighting to keep it lit during the day. Odor control, it does, it is equipped with odor control. It is, does not have the GAC, the granular activated carbon system in it, but it does have the piping, it does have the fans, it does have the equipment for that. And so if it gets to a point where the smells, the methane, the gases inside the building get too much, and we do need to put odor control on it, it's just installing the GAC. And then it's up and running. We'll all be, we will be using the odor control as in fans and just moving and ventilation to help give that a 50-year life, like we want, we want this building to give us a 50-year life. So there's a fan room, screenings bays, the intake pipes that are at the bottom of the building there. And then going on to the next picture is just an overview of what it looks like inside. So an open building, open concept floor plan, minus the kitchen, but just kind of gives us the two grits, three screenings, or actually, excuse me, three channels with three potential screens. We're only going to equip it for two for right now, and then it has a future screen that can go in when the flow gets to the point that we need to add another screen. What's different kind of with this building compared to the current one that we have is redundancy. If we have issues with our current building, it has two screens, only has one grit. So if a grit goes down, that building goes down. This building is going to have two grits, which means if we have a grit that goes down, we still have a function, a functional building that's moving wastewater. And the three screens, the three channels, we have, if both screens go down, we still have an extra channel that can process what the wastewater, it's, we'll have a manual bar screen, which means that if we have to get to that point, we have to use that channel. That means we have an operator there 24/7 to scrape the screen, you know, scrape the bar screen to keep the flow going. But with two brand-new screens in there, I think we should be fine for quite a while. It does have some separate rooms. With this being a headworks facility, that main open channel, that main middle portion of the building is considered a Class 1 Division 1 atmosphere, which means everything that we do in there has to be explosion-proof. So all of the electrical, anything that's got, you know, no flames, anything that's electrical has to be protected. And so to have the extra rooms, you know, the, the odor control, the fan room, the grit, or, excuse me, the, the electrical room that's up there in that kind of upper corner, the mechanical room, the sample room, all of those are separate rooms, and then we minus that, that's not, they're not considered Division 1, Class 1 rooms. So the electrical there is a lot cheaper, and it, it makes it so that we can do things in separate rooms without being in that main, kind of main portion of the building. So we do have to take samples out of there on a daily basis, and so that's hence the sample room where the sampler will be. You notice the, the electrical room went to a larger closet-type space that can be used for growth. And so just some, kind of just some features that we're looking at to make this building a lot nicer and a lot better, and to last a lot longer than our current facility. It will have the 12 exchange, air exchanges done per hour, which will help minimize deterioration of the building. And then there are features in the building, coatings and whatnot, that will help protect it for a longer life as well. So with that, that kind of puts me to just kind of the two buildings, the old one and the proposed one. And then if there's any questions with that, I can answer those questions, and then I'll just kind of talk about the resolution.
I have a few comments and questions. So the headworks building for the general public, it really separates what should keep going on and what shouldn't keep going on, right? So.
Yeah.
It's important to have that, right?
Yeah, so talking from just a wastewater standpoint, when the wastewater comes to us, we have to do two things, right? We have to get all the garbage out. So anything that's garbage, that doesn't belong in the wastewater, we have to get out. That's what this does. Because our oxidation ditch, we can't have that garbage coming to the oxidation ditch. The oxidation ditch should just be the waste, the, the waste that's coming down minus the garbage. So with that, that's what our screens are doing, is they're taking that garbage out. And then it goes over to the grit, the grit washer. And basically, that's just your eggshells, dirt, rocks, those little things that gets by the screens that we still don't want to plug up our oxidation ditch, so that we, we take that stuff out as well. And currently, our system is not doing very well with that, just because of our older headworks facility is not taking all of the garbage and all of the grit out like it should. So that's why we are looking at upgrading that.
Yeah, thank you for explaining that. I think it's important to have it, soon as it gets where it's going, that the building's working properly, right? Because it's going to affect everything downstream, so.
It does.
And then you had mentioned a 50-year life on this building, so it's increasing capacity significantly, and we're suggesting it's enough for the next 50 years, that.
Yeah.
The capacity that we're going to have is enough to withstand the growth that will happen in the community. Is that safe to say?
Yes, each channel is rated at 7 million gallons per day. Currently, the facility has 3.4 million gallons per day of wastewater that can process through there. Each channel will do 7 million gallons per day, and we'll be equipping it with 14 million gallons per day capacity, with the future of going another 7 to 21, which puts us out quite a ways.
I think it's great.
Yeah.
But needed is the important thing there.
Yeah.
It's needed.
It's needed, yeah. Like you says, it's, it's the first line of defense. So if this building is not doing what it needs to do, the rest of the plant suffers. And so we've been doing upgrades to, you know, the filters, we've been doing upgrades to our oxidation ditch. Those really don't take place unless this headworks gets where it needs to be.
And then I just bring this up because sometimes I get people in the community who ask why we don't get more grants and things like that. This is one of the projects we, we did try to get a grant for, correct? And we didn't get awarded that grant, so I think it's important for the public to know that we did look for other options to fund this, including grants, and unfortunately, we didn't get the grant we were hoping to get.
Yeah, that's, that's what's kind of hard with some of this, is because with it being a water quality project, or even drinking water projects, grants are hard to come by. They go more to those communities that really need it, that don't have the money, to where communities that do have somewhat of a base to help pay for it, you know? It's more of a loan-type system for us than it is a grant, so unless there's other revenues. But there are, we did get a little bit of ARPA funds that did get slated for this project, which we're grateful for that, and thank you for allowing us to get some of that money to help with this project.
Any other questions from the council or comments about?
Okay, so I'm just going to go through the resolution really quick, just so that we can at least kind of get through that. So we did go out to bid for this project based on the plans that were prepared by JUB engineers. And we did get, we did get three contractors that did put a bid in, Nelson Brothers, which did one of our projects just recently at the wastewater facility, Vancon and Cop Construction. And the low responsive bidder was Nelson Brothers with a base bid of 8.4, 84029 million dollars, with an added alternate of 123,420. Now, that alternate is to turn our existing building back into just a storage building, so just filling in the channels. And I didn't want to demo that building. I thought, you know, the cost of demo would probably add quite a bit to the project. And we are lacking storage facilities down there at our facility. And so having a building that's just, we could use as a storage building for parts and whatnot is, is a good. So for that, we decided just to fill in the channels and turn it into a storage building. And so to do that, we're about $123,000 that was added to the, as a, as an alternate. We are asking for a contingency of 715,000 on this project, just because of the unknowns. We are dealing with wastewater, we are dealing with things that we might not know what's going on underground. And one of the issues that we might have problems with is that splitter box that's currently there, that we might have to do some different changes to that, depending on when we get into that. So we are asking for 715,000 for contingency with a total project amount of 9,322,449. We are looking at the ARPA funds, a good portion of impact fees and the sewer enterprise revenues to help fund the project, and we do have that in the budget for that. It's about a 70% impact fee because of the growth of the building, and so we, we can take a good portion of our impact fees to help pay for this project. Okay, any other questions related to that one? So that is on the business meeting for your approval tonight, and I'll bring it back to you at that time.
All right, thank you.
I'm looking at this, and I see that you're on here a couple of more times, but I hate to say it, but I think you've already spent your all the.
Yeah, I can sit down.
And then we are going to discuss Resolution 2023-22, a resolution of the Twilla City Council approving an agreement with Kilgore Contracting for the 2023 roadway reconstruction and water line replacement project presented by Jamie.
Well, Dave, on this one, at least it's a different, it's a different division of the public works.
Because you don't have any budget left.
Yeah, we pretty much spent that one. So with this one, this is a resolution that, for Kilgore Construction, or Kilgore Contracting, excuse me, for the 2023 roadway reconstruction and water line replacement project. So, you know, within our, within our, our program, we have several streets within the city that need to be replaced, and it's a daunting task, and we can't always do all the roads every year. And so we find those that are at the top of the list, and we try to do as many of those as we can. So with this, we have three roads that we looked at, one being 1220 South, Clifford Drive, and Lisa, is it Lisa Way, Paul, Lisa Way? There's the three roads, and so those three roads are in need of having the road replaced. With that, all of those have a water line that's at 6-inch, and so anywhere that we find a 6-inch water line, because that's not the standard anymore, it's now 8-inch. So we try to replace that to an 8-inch water line, so that we can stay on top of that as well. And so we will be replacing the water line in all three of those roads to an 8-inch water line. So we took that out to bid and received, I think, I don't know, let's see how many bids. Can't remember how many bids we got for that one. We got four, four bids came back with Kilgore being the low responsible bidder, and they came in at $1,666,967. And we're asking for a contingency of 83,000 for any change orders that might come up from that project. Again, we are going into the road to replace water and could come up, could run into things that we're not, we don't, we're not aware of. So that's what we have for that resolution. Any questions on that one?
And this money is coming from?
This money is coming from the water, the water budget, the water enterprise account, and Road C.
And then does this replace any, like we did chip cell last year? Are we still doing that on some roads?
Yeah, we are still going to do that.
These are just like replacing everything?
Yeah, we still, yeah, we have this, kind of just so FYI, can you, so you know where we're going this year, is we have, this is our main road project. We are looking at doing some storm drain stuff this summer and, and doing the chip cell work as well.
After all the snow, we'll probably be doing a lot of pothole repairs.
Yeah, and a lot of pothole. Yeah, the roads took a beating this, this winter because of the plows and the snow.
My car fills it.
Yeah.
Yeah.
So as, and as soon as we can get with, once we can get some hot asphalt, we'll start getting some, getting some potholes done and getting some, some of the roads fixed up the best we can, and try to keep some of our roads in good shape as much as we can, and get some of these other roads fixed. And then we also, you know, some of the roads that we did last year, Sunset and Oak Hill, we want to get a chip cell on those too, so that we can protect those before they do start. It's best to try to get some type of protection over that before too long, so that it doesn't just beat it up and wear it down quicker than it should.
That's good.
Do we have a significant amount of six inch, 6-inch pipe in the city, or is that?
Yeah, we still have quite a bit, huh, Paul? There's still, yeah, we still have quite a bit of 6-inch in town.
Any other questions? Okay, we will move on to discussion item E, the wastewater facilities impact fee facilities plan and impact fee analysis draft presented by Jamie.
Okay, this is another one that I have a PowerPoint for, and I'll just kind of, kind of go through and highlight some of the, some of the stuff from our impact fee analysis, impact fee facilities plan and analysis that was just recently done by Fred Philpot. The purpose of this plan, you know, is to fulfill the requirements established in Utah Code Title II, Chapter 36A, which is also known as the Impact Fees Act, and to assist us, you know, the city, in financing and constructing necessary capital improvements for future growth. So it's just, you know, our impact fee for, that we collect to try to help build some of our projects, like our headworks facility. This plan addresses the future wastewater infrastructure needed to serve the service area through the rest, or through the next 10 years, and what the appropriate impact fee the city may charge to new growth to maintain the existing level of service. So some of the things that we looked at in this plan is the, you know, the April 2009 water reclamation facility plan, the September 2022 wastewater collection system master plan. And then with wastewater, there's two parts, you know, there's the collection, and then there's the treatment. We did not do an update to the treatment plan prior to kind of getting this going. So the November 22, 2022 memo updating the cost from the 2009 water reclamation facility plan. So that's the last time we did a capital facilities plan for wastewater for the treatment plant was in 2009. But we're currently doing that right now, so we decided to go out and get that updated. And what we did, just so that we could get this movement and get a fee to you, is we just had them update the existing projects in the 2009 plan to 2022 cost. And so they supplied a memo and a future project list for those projects that are impact fee eligible. And so those were also added or looked at into this plan. Once that plan's supposed to come out in the summer, if there is a kind of a difference in the impact fee and the level of service, we might come back in a future date to see if there's an update we want to do to the impact fee. But at this point in time, we're just going to keep moving forward the way we've got it. So going on to the next page, this is, you know, we got our buy-in cost and future facilities, and the costs are up there a little bit. Collection is not as bad, however, treatment is. And we have a treatment plant that's over 20 years old now, and we have a lot of growth coming in, and that plant is kind of maxed out in some areas. And so there is a pretty good fee to upgrade that treatment plant. Some of those projects is included in this impact fee. And so the buy-in total cost of 38 million, 167,628, which includes treatment and collection. You'll notice that in this one, and if you, if you've kind of seen in previous ones, and I'm not sure if you have, that was just kind of a wastewater collection, or a wastewater fee, impact fee. This time, we've broken it out into treatment and collection. And as I get going a little bit further in the presentation, I'll kind of explain why we did that. But what we've got going is a treatment and collection, and so you'll see two different costs there. Future facilities is at 62,208,246, which is a little over $100 million. And then if you look at the cost to I, to the impact fee growth, you're at 7 million buy-in, just a little over 7 million buy-in, and 12 million for future facilities, which then puts you at a treatment total of, let's just back up, I'm sorry, let me back up a little bit. Let's go back to the cost per ERU at the buy-in of 1806, which is 456 to collection and 1350 to treatment. And then for future facilities, it brings it to 1892 treatment and 1091 collections, the collection side. There is an interest credit of $61, and then the professional, professional expense of $3, which puts us at 4731, so the treatment total of 3203 and the collection total of 1528. So a good portion of the impact fee does go to treatment, because that's where the money needs to go. There are some collection projects that need to be done, so there is a little bit of money that would go to that side. But a good portion of that is going to the treatment side. So then we kind of go and we talk about demand units and just citywide ERU projections. We are looking to 2030 at 18,517 ERUs, which at 2020, we are at 14,400. That's an increase of 4,4117 ERUs just to the 2030 timeline. And then also look at that at 24,488 by 2060, so 30-year timeframe, you're almost 10,000 more ERUs in that system. So taking it over to the next slide, that's our level of LOS standards, so level of service. Impact fees cannot be used to finance an increase in the, in the level of service to current or future users of the system improvements. So we have to identify the wastewater level of service currently provided within the city to ensure that the new capacities of projects financed through impact fees do not exceed the established standard. So that's where we have to break it down and look at just the gallons, the gallons per day, ERUs, our gallons per day per ERU. And what that does is that gives us two different levels of service, a treatment level of service of 170 gallons per day per ERU, and then a peak collection level of service of 230. So that's where it breaks it into two different gallons per day. So that's why we ended up going with two different kind of fees for collections and treatment, because of the different gallons per day each facility has. So our treatment level of service actually comes down as gallons per day just at to 170 because of, of the treatment side of things. So moving on, this is kind of just a brief summary of our existing facilities. Treatment capacity right now, 3.4 million gallons per day, the existing value of 27 million. And then our collection system is valued at $11 million, or, yeah, a little over $11 million with our 175 miles of pipe, 3,300 manholes that's currently in the system. So this is our, kind of our current system that we have. So with that, it breaks it into the formula for a non-standard wastewater impact fees. You have the way of determining the treatment, and how to determine that fee of 3203, and then the collection of 1528. And so, and that's based on 170 gallons per day and 230. So currently, that impact fee is based on 350 gallons per day, just as, just as a wastewater fee, and it's not broken down into the two different collections and treatment. So with an ERU for just a typical home, which is just one ERU, that typical home, you know, would be the, the 3203 for the treatment and 1528 for the collections fees. would be the, the 3203 for the treatment and 1528 for the collections fees, which ends up being, I think, just, I think a little over four, was it 4,731? So and currently, I'm sorry, it's right here, currently that fee is at 2290. So we are asking for that fee to go from 2290 per ERU, currently at 350 gallons per day, to 4731, which is the proposed ER, or proposed impact fee. So does bring it up quite a bit from where it was at. So at this point in time, it's just a work session, just to talk about it. It, we will bring it back to the council meeting, I think the first council meeting in May, to do it as a public hearing and to get the approval for that. And I don't, how long does that take before it goes into effect, Roger? Is it 90, 90 days? So then 90 days for that to go into effect. There is, it does change the calculation a little bit on those other than homes, so a business based off of what their water use is, it'll be determined by the 170 to 230. So it could change the way a business is configured and can be a little bit higher for a business, based off of that calculation. That's kinda short and sweet, 17 pages combined into about five minutes.
It was fascinating reading.
Yeah. So, but I can answer any questions, if there's any questions. If you feel comfortable with that fee, or if you want me to reevaluate it based on any other scenarios that you wanna look at, but that's what we're proposing to do.
I'm in support.
Yeah, I support it as well. I think if you don't raise it to that, you will wish we did at some point, so.
Yeah.
All right, any other questions or comments? This one is not on the business meeting, right?
No, yeah. We're gonna let you digest it.
Yeah, we've had enough. I knew it wasn't, I was just.
We'll let you digest this for a few weeks, and then we'll bring it back to you.
Okay, all right.
He's definitely betting a thousand.
All right, thanks Jamie.
Thanks, David.
Item F is a discussion on the secondary class roads standards. This is presented by Jim Bolser, the Community Development Director.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. This is a request for no money.
Thank you.
At least not tonight.
So as the council will recall, quite a while back, a few months ago, there was a continued discussion of what we do with, I'm sorry, what's below the discussion line is incorrect, so disregard that portion. Sorry, it's throwing me a little bit. That part doesn't exist, it's just the discussion title. What, there's been some discussion about what we do as far as improving when development occurs, what historically have been referred to as alleys, specifically 50 West, 150 West, and portions of Garden Street. As, as we know, they're, they're not actually alleys, they are substandard local-class roads. But that presents a challenge of now we have this special classification of road, and over a number of years, we've tried a couple of different approaches. We've gone from, they have to be improved, they have to be widened, down to they have to effectively do nothing to, other than provide the right-of-way where needed. And we've had a varying degree of success, let's put it that way. And so there was some discussion again here in the last few months about looking at this again, and taking the added step that we haven't in the past, of actually taking more of a direct survey of those corridors and finding out exactly what we have and exactly what we can, can and can't do. So with the discussion recently, we've started that work. I'm presenting this this evening, but this is anything but my own work. This has a, been a massive collaborative of, effort. A lot of credit goes, in fact, to our fire department. Chief McCoy, as well as our fire marshal Nick Wall, have spent many hours driving these corridors, taking their fire trucks out, and actually doing measurements and figuring out exactly what we've got and where. And so a massive amount of credit goes to them. A massive amount of credit goes to our Public Works Department. Marissa Snyder, our GIS technician, has done a tremendous amount of work in preparing information. And, and really, all I did is presenting it to you. So the credit goes to them, certainly the mayor and the administration have been an integral part of this, our city engineer's been an integral part of this, and it's been a, as I mentioned, a massively collaborative effort here. My intent tonight is not to go through everything line by line and word by word, because it is an awful lot of information to get us started, but simply to bring it back to you for an update, but also to see where you'd like to go from here. And so what we did is a couple of things. In your repack, in your packet, you receive two pieces of information. The first was a table that presented effectively what the existing travel surface, in some cases, if you can call it travel surface, exists in these corridors, whether or not it has curb and gutter currently, whether or not we would suggest or recommend requiring sidewalk, and in, if we do, is it on one side or the other, or is it on both? And then a, a section of notes on each section. One of the things that we did to kinda take a bite out of this was to do it section by section. And so we have, for instance, using 50 West as an example, but it, it plays across the board, Utah Avenue to 200, or to 400 North is one section. It's a one continuous section without another cross street. And then, and so we broke them up by sections and looked at them that way. The notes that you're seeing in that document, that is straight from our fire department. That's the work that they did. And in fact, I simplified it down a little bit to be kinda more pertinent to what we're talking about here. They had additional notes that were very beneficial to themselves. I also put in the packet for you, basically, the presentation that the fire department put together on what they're seeing. It showed a number of photographs and some notations along each one of these sections as kinda some background for you. In front of you this evening, I've provided two documents to you. The first is actually an update to that table that you, we received in your packet. The only thing that changed is we added the third column, which is existing right-of-way width, and you'll notice there's an asterisk behind that. The reason there's an asterisk behind that, and the reason why we've added that column, frankly, is we were still trying to figure out what would go in that column when the packet went out. So we, we wanted to hold off until we knew exactly what we were putting in that, in that column before we provided that piece of information to you. The reason for the asterisks is at the bottom of the second page, under the notations, where basically what we've had to do is, and I'm gonna, I'm gonna step forward in my presentation here just a little bit to kinda get us there. So this is the original plat A. This is the original plan that the city's street network and the development, developable properties is based on, and I'm gonna zoom into this, so you don't need to squint. But this is the original plat A, most recently recorded in the Office of the County Recorder in 1980. But obviously, it existed much before that, because another 90 years of history preceded that recording date. So zooming into it a little bit, you can see the block numbers that were recorded, but there are little numbers at the top that are interesting. I'm gonna zoom in onto the, onto them as well. Those little numbers right there identify what the right-of-way widths are supposed to be. For Garden Street, it's 33 feet, which is, if, for, for those of us nerds that like the, the history of planning, that's two chains in length. Chain is 16 and a half feet, so that's two chains. And then for 50 West and 150 West, it's 49 and a half feet, which is three chains. Now, the interesting thing that we've discovered early on, and we, we knew this from the prior discussions, is that those numbers don't really hold true on the ground, and it's very inconsistent both in what right-of-way actually exists, but then also what physical space exists within that right-of-way to get road through. We've got imposition of fences and accessory structures and trees and all sorts of things that are in the right-of-way that place impediments on the actual usage of that much ground, if in fact it does exist. And so what we did, and, and this credit goes largely to Marissa Snyder, is that we looked at actually approved projects in each one of these segments, the, the projects that we could find in each one of these segments. And the reason we looked at those is because those are required to actually be survey accurate. And so those plans will actually show, at least for half of the right-of-way, what actually exists according to, to survey accuracy. In some places, we found that, for some of these blocks, these numbers held true. Some places, they didn't. But what it did do was give us a point, a, a point in location or a point in time, so to speak, where we can say, okay, for this segment of the street, this is how much right-of-way we have. So basically, we've extrapolated that one project's survey accurate, accurate data to hold true for that entire block. So there's an assumption in that, I grant you. But that's about as accurate as we can get without commissioning a very expensive survey for the entirety of these three corridors. And since Jamie's already spent your money this evening, we didn't have that money to do it. And so we, we wanted to just do some, some reasonable extrapolation to at least provide you some information to start this conversation. So the second document that I provided to you this evening also goes to the credit of Marissa Snyder. As she went through each one of these corridors and pulled out those projects, she actually overlaid some colored artwork, I'll call it, based on those projects, where she actually showed what are now understood rights-of-way would look like on those corridors. And so thi, this is a table, for those that are, that are watching online or here in the room, this is the table that the council is looking at. This is the table for 150 West. You'll notice on the left-hand side, there's a series of page numbers. Those page numbers correspond to Marissa's presentation that's here. And I've just given you her, her presentation straight. She did a fabulous job with it, and there's no need for me to screw it up for her. So I've just given it to you straight, so that you've got her great work here. So those page numbers correspond to the maps in her presentation, and you'll notice on the notations, there's a page number on each one of her maps, and so you get a direct correspondence. So in each one of these segments, and I'll just kinda flip through, this is an example of a section from 150 West. So you'll notice that it is a yellow highlighted corridor. That's what a 49 and a half foot right-of-way would look like. If we were to cut it the full width, based on what we can see as an appropriate property boundary, that's what a 49 and a half foot right-of-way would look like, cutting through this section. And again, I'm using this as an example, I'm not gonna go through every one of her, her maps, but they're, they're all the same principle. So this is the example for 150 West. This is the table for 50 West, and you'll notice now that that 49 and a half foot corridor that was called for on the original plat A, we're identifying based on actual development projects that it's only 33 feet. And so we've got a different scenario here. So in these maps, you'll notice that she put a blue highlight through that corridor. The blue light indicates the 33-foot corridor, the yellow highlight identifies the 49 and a half. So each one of these maps has that same principle on it. So you can flip through every one of these sections and identify exactly how much right-of-way we reasonably believe exists for each one of these sections of, of the three corridors. And then similarly, for Garden Street, it's a little bit different, it's a little more defined, it's a little more accurate because of some development that's happened, and it's pretty universally 33 feet, as has been identified in plat A. And so that's really what we wanted to present to you this evening, is to provide you the effort that's gone on thus far. There is some recommendations built into this table. For instance, what we've realized is that whether or not we have 33 feet or we have 49 and a half feet of right-of-way, we still have more than 30 feet that we need of asphalt surface for a, a, a local-class road. It may not physically be there due to impediments, but we've got the believed right-of-way to do it. And so what our recommendation is, is to keep the asphalt at the 30 feet that we currently require, but then have a, and require with that the curb and gutter on either side for the, the range of, of reasons that you've heard before as to why we require curb and gutter. But then also have a notation that says that if we get into a pinch where we need to include that curb and gutter into that 30 feet, we have the option to do that. But really, we should have the room at 33 feet to pretty much get what we need. And then also the recommendations based on what we've seen physically developed for sidewalk within each one of these sections, and then just extrapolate that through the section. So that will be a little bit of inconsistency with, you know, west side in one section, then the east side in one section, then both in some, one section, and then none in one section, really just based on how much room we've got. And so getting what we can do within the space we've got without going way overboard and really requiring the world and dedication and all sorts of things that would be a real impediment when development comes forward. So we wanted to present this to you, provide it, the work that's gone on, and really see, number one, if we're following with what you're thinking as far as these few recommendations that are in here, and then see what steps you'd like to pursue next. Being as at a collaborative event, I'm, I'm more than happy, Mayor, if you have anything you wanna share, or anyone else is in the room, please feel free to do so.
Council, we would be happy to send you, this presentation is awesome. But if you want something that we can send you files on your computers, and you look on a bigger screen and really see what everything is, there has been a lot of work that has gone into this, and everybody has done an exceptional job to work, work so that when these property owners do want to develop, or even if they don't, but they wanna build a shed on the secondary road, we, we gotta get a fire truck back there. We, we have to, and this is a, this is a safety issue, and, and what we would like to do is start addressing how we implement this, who's gonna pay for what? But we know right now that a lot of the, the ditches, the entryways that go, go onto those roads, some of them are just very, very narrow and steep, you can't even get a fire truck there. So that is a plan that we will put into place as the city to get those, at least those addressed, and we can get a truck through there. But, but I think this plan is going to work. It puts all of the residents that own property along those areas, that in the future, this is what will be required.
I have a question about sidewalks, and since they're secondary roads, do we need them at all?
Well, and that, that was a question that we debated, and frankly, it's, we can still debate it. Really, the requests, the, the recommendation that we're showing here for sidewalk, if there's none there today, we provided a no requirement to you. The ones that you're seeing listed as either west side, east side, or both sides are ones that already have sections there, so it would simply be an expansion of what's there. The argument being, on one hand, you're exactly correct, they're secondary roads, do we really need them? But on the other hand, these are all our infill areas as well. So if they do develop, are we going to have a need to walk to a store, to a school, or something to get, you know, pedestrians away from the traffic surface? We might, but it's just a matter of, do we wanna go to the step of saying, if it's not there, now there's widening, now there's a, that's where I think we cross over into, do we need it or not? But if it's already there and we have the room, we've made a recommendation to say, yeah, we probably ought to continue that.
Okay. It's just, it's weird to go from side to side.
It, it is. It, it can be a little awkward, but where we're doing it at intersections, it's, it's manageable. We're not suggesting in any of these cases that, that be a mid-block thing, it's all at one of the.
Intersection.
Ends of these segments.
So in some of the pictures, there's cars that are parked on these roads?
Yes.
And even if it's 30 feet, it doesn't seem like it's wide enough to have a car parked there and a fire truck to safely pass by?
Absolutely.
So is it possible to have an ordinance that's passed that restricts parking on these roads? I mean, we could do that.
I mean, we could do that, right?
I would.
Just be specific to certain streets, or would you say secondary streets?
I think you could, you could do it both directions. It's just a matter of how we want to craft it.
Okay. I think, just looking at the pictures, and I'm sure, I'm sure Chief McCoy could speak to this too, but.
Thank you for joining us, Chief. I didn't see you come in.
Yeah. The tracks are right on some of these pictures, if there was a fire, there's no way that the fire truck could safely get to where they need to go, so.
Yeah.
I appreciate this, because these are all things that have come up in planning commission, like, multiple times in the last short little while. So I think this is a great start, in my opinion.
So I have kind of a random question. I debated if I should even ask it, but in Erda, there's Rabbit Lane that they shut down to vehicle traffic, and it's a walkway. Are there any roads that that could be done in Tuilla, and that way you don't have to worry about it even being a motorized road? Or are all these because of the alleyways and things like that? Is it necessary to eventually have them expanded to?
Well, I, I think there's, I think there's really two questions in there. Is there possibilities? Yeah, I think there is. And frankly, if we were going to examine something like that, these probably aren't bad candidates. On the flip side, where I think that might become problematic is exactly the reason why we're looking at these roads, and that is, these, these roads are directly adjacent and often provide access to very deep, often narrow lots that probably ought to be split and accessing solely onto that road while the front half is accessing onto the more primary road. So in that regard, they're probably not great candidates for that. So, I mean, if we were in a position where it was, we weren't necessarily addressing the argument of these deep lots that are narrow and how and if they develop, yeah, I think these could be really good candidates. But I think in light of the developability and the properties around them, they're probably not great candidates.
The one that I looked at, that I thought, maybe it would be plausible to do that, is up by the cemetery.
Mm-hmm.
It's South Garden Street, I think.
Yeah.
But I don't know how much those will be developed on the east side. And nothing's there now, I don't know if they access the road, but.
Some do.
I don't know, sometimes it seems like you just make it a trail, and then you don't have to worry about widening it, and there's still access to other places, but just an idea, so.
Yeah. And not a bad idea, just a question of, can we find an appropriate spot to utilize it? Yeah.
That particular, that business is up there, they use that alley to come out on that business.
But they're right on the corner, so.
Yeah. The, I totally understand what you guys are talking about, because just going down Garden Street, when there's cars parked on the road, you literally have to wait for someone to pass to go around. So I'm good with this.
Well, that's another ordinance we could discuss, right?
Yeah.
Kind of parking. So thanks for the pictures, Chief McCoy.
Yes.
It really helped.
It was helpful.
Opened my eyes to how bad it is in some spots. Okay, any other discussion on this item? Okay, we will move on to our discussion, item G, which is a discussion about the commercial special district zoning, presented by Marissa Manzio and the RDA chair.
Thank you. And Jared Stewart was going to present, but he is not here tonight, so I'll try to do him justice, and hopefully, he's not watching. But this is something that we've talked about for a while in our RDA meetings as we develop our Tuilla Business Park. We've contracted to get a rail plan, so that we have a rail plan within the park, and we've started to market that area for potential buyers. And we actually have one company that we're in negotiations with now, and a second one potentially. So we wanted to get this in place before we get too far down the road in the business park. And you can add anything you want to say.
Oh, no, you're doing fine.
So we started with, Jared reached out to the other property owners, because we are not the sole property owner in the area. And they are all in agreement that they'd like to market the property, and they like our plan, and they're all in on this plan. So basically, the commercial service district is a zoning map amendment, and it sets some requirements, and kind of like CCNRs, is how I look at it a little bit, for the area. Because we've gone through, you know, the, I guess, planning and paying for a plan, a couple of different plans for this area, we wanted to lay out how we want it to lay out, instead of just sell things willy-nilly and hope for the best. So we've laid it out, so that we want some heavy industrial on one side, lighter industrial on the other, not so much intermix. We want the buildings to look a certain way. And the pictures that are attached to the presentation are from an Ogden Industrial Park. And don't look at the grass, because we're gonna say no grass. That's one of the guidelines, not even a guideline, requirements. So, but the building, as far as the way the buildings look and some of the features. So this plan is, this is just a first look for us. It still has to go to planning commission, and then it will come back to the, to the council. There are still a few things that need to be tweaked. I think the plan that is attached in our packet, we've made a few changes since then as far as fencing and a couple of architectural standards, a couple of types of businesses that we would and would not allow, and maybe one other thing. But, so just a first look, just to see what your thoughts were, if you had any questions or concerns or suggestions, and then it will go to the planning commission.
Okay. From what I read, I think it's great, so I'm in support of it.
Good.
Do you have anything to add?
No, ma'am. We're good.
Okay. Any other discussion on this? Okay, we will move on to item six. We do have a closed meeting this evening to discuss personnel. I'm going to recess now, though, and then we will reconvene at 7:00 for our business meeting, and then we'll go to our closed meeting after the business meeting. So we'll recess until our business meeting.
Okay.